To the Committee Board on Faculty, Staff and Administration. It's finally spring, looks like it's trying to come in, so we will move the agenda forward. Please note that we have two additional items to consider today in addition to the items on this agenda. The copies of those items are on your, are on the table. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January 7th, 2013?
So moved.
It's been moved. May I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you. We will now move to the policy calendar. And I will call on Vice Chancellor Pam Silverblatt to present item 1B1.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you. I am here to ask your consideration and approval for a resolution that would adopt a pilot pre-retirement partial leave with partial pay policy here at the university. This is a modification to the university's existing policy that grants partial leave with partial pay. What this would do is allow tenured faculty members and certificated lecturers here at the university who are eligible to retire, that is, at least 65 years of age with 15 years of service, enter into a pre-retirement program that would allow them to work 50% of their work commitment and receive 50% pay for a period of not less than one year and not more than three years. The university believes that such a program would allow people to ease their way into retirement and to explore retirement options without yet making a full-time commitment to retire. Programs of this type exist at colleges and universities across the country, and we think that it would be advantageous to be able to offer such a program to our faculty. It would be on a strictly voluntary basis, so folks who are interested in participating would apply to participate, and the approval for that participation would go through their departmental process and up through their other appropriate college-based approvals. And we would ask for consideration to be able to move forward with this resolution. I would note before moving on and asking the committee members if they have any questions, that we have been negotiating with the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, the university that represents the faculty and professional staff at the university, to be able to enter into a phased retirement program, which is similar but not identical to this. We have been engaged in those negotiations for an extended period of time, and we remain hopeful that we will ultimately be able to conclude an arrangement with the union, a bilateral arrangement, that would allow for a phased retirement program that would also allow faculty and certificated lecturers, as well as instructional staff, to be able to phase for a period of time. If we are able to reach a bilateral agreement with the Professional Staff Congress, we will not ultimately move forward with this resolution, but we will simply move forward with a resolution that amends our retirement plan document so that people can draw down on their annuity contributions. However, we are at a crossroads and at a juncture where the end of this academic year is upon us. We have been negotiating for a period of time, and we don't want to be in a position of not having anything to roll out for next year. And so, in order to be able to ensure that we can roll out a program next year, albeit not as expansively as we would if we can conclude the negotiations with the union, we're asking for your consideration to move forward with this resolution. And if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I'll move it.
Professor, Dr. Carter?
Yes. In the language of the resolution, you, in the language of the resolution, it discusses the department chair will review the application, and the department chair determines if the application goes forward. So just now you referred to a departmental process, but in fact, the departmental process does not kick in unless the chair approves it. One concern that I would have about the policy and the policy language is that it would be, if not at the whim, certainly at the discretion of a department chair, and since these are sometimes long relationships with, you know, peaks and valleys, I would be concerned about a department chair having so much control on a pilot program that may prove very fruitful for the university in planning a staged retirement for faculty.
One moment before you respond, it's been moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Please continue.
I'm not sure I heard a question. I would like to try to frame a response that's responsive to your question.
Are you considering, are you considering a resolution that would not hinge on the approval of one individual?
At this juncture, I think the direct answer to that is not. It seems to me that the chair is entrusted with configuring the schedule for the department and needing to ensure that the classes and the schedule are adequately covered, and we are anticipating that that will be the criterion that works as the guidepost here. I'm fully expecting, as with the other initiatives that at least I have overseen roll out, that if there are issues, I'm going to hear about those issues and will work to facilitate in resolving them should they arise, but truly not anticipating that they arise. The language of the resolution, I think, calls upon the colleges to, to think about being flexible and be somewhat expansive. I think that the language in the resolution casts it in that tone. I will tell you that if we ultimately get to a negotiated agreement with the PSC, which really has been our goal all along and is our hope, it will look somewhat different than this. The language in terms of the review will look somewhat different, and how it proceeds along will be somewhat different. And in fact, if there is not approval in the first year, there will be default that allows, allows a faculty member to config, to pre-retire with their requested configuration in a subsequent year. So it will look different, and in truth, our hope is to get to a bilateral agreement.
We've heard your concern.
It's been moved in second. Any additional questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. President Lisa, please join us to present items 1B2, An Amendment to the Governance Plan of the City College of New York.
Okay. What we are asking for today is approval of a change in the City College Governance Plan. The proposed amendment would provide that the Chair of the Faculty Committee on Personnel Matters and the Chair of the Executive Committee of the Faculty Senate would gain voting rights on the Review Committee, which is the City Colleges, City, College-Wide Personnel and Budget Committee. And it's the highest level of committee involved in making recommendations on personnel matters. The current procedure limits faculty representation to the non-voting members of the Chair of the Senate and the Chair of the Executive Committee of the Faculty Committee on Personnel Matters. So that is what is before you. We think it will be very helpful to have more faculty participation in the final review process.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. And we're going to ask President Jennifer Robb to come forward, and she will present items 1B4 and 1B5, two names associated with Hunter College.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm presenting first, a request to name one of the main reading rooms in our under-construction and to be newly renovated main floor of our library, the Ann Spitzer Reading Room, in honor of a million-dollar gift from Ann Spitzer's family. As everyone knows, Ann and Bernard Spitzer have been great supporters of the CUNY system, both as alums. What you may not know is that Ann has been a, one of our very successful instructors in our continuing education program. She is a literature professor with a continuing following and has become very integrated into our own creative writing program and participates in many of our events. And I approached her children about honoring her participation at Hunter with this million-dollar gift, and they were very happy to provide the funds which were in, to installments, and requested the naming that we bring to you today.
You may do the second one.
Great. The second is a $125,000 gift, which was made by the family of Dr. Stowe Whitner Hausner, a, an alum of both Hunter College High School and Hunter College. The gift was arranged by the longtime librarian of Hunter College High School, who is also a Hunter College alum, and the librarian, actually, when I was a student there, this was one of her relatives beloved, and she arranged for the family to get together to do the $125,000 gift in honor, and a room in the library will be named after her if the board approves this proposed resolution.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval of the two?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations. President Myskins? President Myskins, would you join us at the table? Item 1B6.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. We would like to name our Center for Biological Systems in honor of the late Barry Commoner. As you, you all know who he was, you may not know he was a professor at Queens for many, many years. The Center for Biological Systems is a very important entity in developing plans on environmental issues. They have now over 70 people. In the 10 years I've been there, it's received external funding of over $50 million, 10 million of that in 2013. We think that if we can name the Center for Barry Commoner, that will add certain prestige to the center, will help to clarify what we really do in that center. The Center for Biological Systems doesn't communicate a lot. The name of Barry Commoner would, and given his contributions, he set the foundation for this, we would like to name the center in his honor. That's my request.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
It's been moved. Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, and congratulations. Abby Lehman?
Oh, thank you. Acting Director of Communications, on behalf of the law school.
Yeah, thank you. I'm here to present three naming requests. The first is a naming resolution for the Hamel family classroom. The Honorable Brian A. and Thomas G. Hamel are among the law school's most loyal donors. Judge Hamel is a 1990 graduate of the law school. She's now retired. She was appointed to the family court bench in 2001, and she served on the school's Board of Visitors since 2005. They have, in their long history of philanthropy, they've provided funds for public interest summer fellowships for students, student scholarships, and they've supported the school's Mississippi project, which sends students to Mississippi and Louisiana each year to work with community and public interest legal organizations, such as the Mississippi Workers Center for Human Rights and the ACLU of Mississippi. So we are, in recognition of their generosity, we would like to name the Hamel family classroom for the family.
You can do all three.
Okay. The second request is for the Gregory and Diana Costa Reference Desk. Greg Costa is Professor Emeritus at the law school. He's been a part of the law school community since it was founded. Before he retired, he served as the school's Chief Librarian for 25 years, and more recently as the Associate Dean for Administration and Finance. He and his wife are longtime supporters of the law school, and so we're seeking to name the Circulation Desk and the Library of the Gregory and Diana Costa Reference Desk. And finally, a request to name the Solomon Slotkin Classroom. The donor for this classroom is a '91 graduate of the law school, and she's among our most loyal supporters. She's actually on the faculty at Queensberry, Queensborough Community College, where she was recognized for 40 years of service there. The classroom is to be named for Solomon Slotkin, her grandfather, who was born in Russia and emigrated to the U.S. and has supported women's economic independence and immigrant rights. So we're seeking to name the classroom the Solomon Slotkin Classroom.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. President Wallace, you're right on time. President Wallace will present items 1B3.
Okay, so we are, good afternoon, everyone. I've got two committees going here, so this is on the honorary degrees.
Naming. This is the naming.
The naming. I'm sorry. Thank you. Pardon my confusion. We, we were most fortunate to convince a alumnus of the Zicklin School of Business to make two very generous naming gifts. One to endow the deanship of the Zicklin School of Business for the, to the tune of $3.5 million, and the other to endow a fund to help support the salary, salaries in the Zicklin School, which of course, in the business school, need to be competitive with other schools of business around the country. His, his name is Villem Koiker, and he is in the hedge fund industry here in New York and has a very distinguished record.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll have to make sure, I would have never, that was Wilcom. So, the board should have to tell me that phonetically. Not to worry. Thank you. We will now have a policy item to consider, which I'll ask Vice Chancellor Waters to present to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am here to present item 1B10, An Amendment to Article 6.1 of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees to Establish the Title of Professor of Military Science. I also am asking that the board waive the requirement in Section 5.1 of Article 5 that requires that amendments to the bylaws be proposed at a meeting preceding the meeting at which the vote is taken, in order to permit a vote at this meeting in connection with this amendment. The university intends to enter into agreement with the United States Army to establish a Pilot Senior Reserve Officers Training Corps, SROTC, program for CUNY students based at City College. The Army requires that the senior commissioned officer assigned to such an SROTC program have the title Professor of Military Science. The Army also does not permit its employees working in SROTC programs to receive compensation from the academic institution for their duties. The title's being created to meet the Army's requirements and to enable the university to move forward with a pilot program, as well as any future SROTC programs, should the university wish to establish them. This position will be non-tenure, non-tenure track and does not carry any compensation or employment status at CUNY. I present the item.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
I'll move it.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is Jeremy here?
Jeremy is not here.
He's unruled. Okay.
Tony Perez?
Tony Perez? Item 1C2.
Madam Chair?
Good evening.
Good evening. Apologize, I didn't recognize you first.
That's okay. He's calling you.
It's my pleasure, after two years of searching for a replacement for our Vice President of Development, that we finally have selected, and she's joined us, Doris Holt, who is a dedicated and highly accomplished fundraiser with 30 years of experience in raising funds in New York City. She's worked for the United Way of New York City, Lennoxville Hospital, the UJAA Federation, and more recently at Yeshiva University. Doris has served as Director of Institutional Advancement for Yeshiva, and the Ferkoff Graduate School of Psychology, and the Works Wides School of Social Work, where she has managed their fundraising efforts. It's my pleasure to recommend to this board Doris Holt as our next Vice President of Development.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, and welcome to CUNY. Thank you so much. And if you would like to address the committee?
Yes, I'm honored to be part of this great institution. I've been learning more and more about CUNY, and I'm inspired by the mission and looking forward to working with you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
And I am hopeful that in the years to come, that Doris and I will be here, naming a number of. There's still some money in the Ferkoff Family Foundation. E.J. Corvette left him an ice penny.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Kenneth Lords of the Office of Academic Affairs.
Good evening. There are three faculty appointments with bylaw waivers that require the committee's approval. They are as follows: the appointment of Leonard Gervitz as Professor with tenure at the City College of New York, waiving the previous tenure requirement set forth in Bylaw 6.2.1 of the bylaws; and the appointment of Linda Villarosa as Assistant Professor at the City College of New York, waiving the academic credential requirement in Bylaw 11.5 of the bylaws; and appointment of Ann Cammett as Professor with tenure at the CUNY School of Law, waiving the previous tenure requirement in Bylaw 6.2.1 of the bylaws. These personnel actions were voted on affirmatively by the school's P&amp;B Committees and are recommended by the college presidents and the dean of the law school respectively. The Office of Academic Affairs and Human Resource Management have reviewed and approved them. Madam Chair, I present these items for the committee's consideration.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. President Lisa, would you join us again?
City, thank you. City College is pleased to recommend the appointment of Jeffrey F. Mackey to the position of Vice President for Development and Institutional Advancement at City College. Since 2007, Mr. Mackey has served as the Chief Development Officer for the Diocese of Bridgeport, Connecticut, where he is responsible for all fundraising across the diocese, including the bishop's appeal, campaigns for Catholic charities, Catholic education, seminarians, and retired priests. He's a highly accomplished fundraiser and fundraising executive with more than 20 years of experience in conducting annual fundraising, planning, implementing of capital campaigns and endowment campaigns, providing staff development and training. He's worked with board members to secure six, seven, and eight-figure gifts, which I hope we will do, and continue to do. And Mr. Mackey also worked with CUNY in some areas in early fundraising efforts at Baruch, and also assisting in early planning of the university-wide campaign. So it's my pleasure to recommend him to this committee.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, and welcome to back to CUNY.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to address the, I understand you are, this is your homecoming.
Well, I'm looking forward very much to working with President Koiker and City College and all of you as we move forward in raising funds. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will move to the information items, and in anticipation of President Jeremy. Will? Oh, you want to do it with him?
Yeah, I can go ahead. I can just present this.
That's fine.
I'd like to present item 1C1, which is the appointment of Ms. Lynette Cook Francis as Vice President for Student Affairs at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Ms. Lynn Cook.
There he is.
Oh, wait, he's here. Okay. You get to do it.
He had a fender bender, so.
You're on.
You're on. Did you leave the car in the fender bender, or I understand you had a fender bender?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay. He was only in traffic.
So, can I invite?
Absolutely.
Our candidate to the, did they walk though?
Well. There's one there, and one there.
Good afternoon.
Perfect timing.
Madam Chair, thank you for accommodating. We just got a student fee increase approved by the committee next door.
Oh.
It was a historic moment for John Jay. I'm really delighted to present to this committee and to the Chair and to the Chancellor and others, Lynette Cook Francis, who we're proposing be approved by this committee as our new Vice President for Student Affairs at John Jay. Ms. Cook Francis comes to us from Arizona, far away, but she's a New Yorker by birth, Mount Sinai Hospital to be specific. So she's coming back, coming back home. She's been at University of Arizona at Tucson for a number of years, most recently as Senior Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs. She has her BA in English from University of Pennsylvania. Initially was pursuing a doctorate in English and got a master's in English at University of Pennsylvania, then decided to go into educational administration, and held a number of positions at the University of Arizona, rising pretty rapidly through the ranks from Associate Dean of Students to Assistant Vice President for Multicultural Affairs and Student Success, to Assistant Vice President for Student Affairs, and now Senior Assistant. Along the way, what I've learned about Lynette is that she has brought a wonderful sense of the larger academic enterprise to the work of the Student Affairs officials. She has worked very carefully with faculty, cares a lot about learning outcomes. Her dissertation, which she's completing now, is assessing learning outcomes in large classrooms. So in the world of student affairs professionals, what stands out in her vita in talking to people at the University of Arizona, is her sense of the entire enterprise. It's not just what happens in the student affairs part of the world, but it's really the academic engagement. So at a time at John Jay, when we're bringing faculty more and more into thinking about student success, to have an executive of her sort of leaning as a way, as a way of thinking about the whole student is very important. She's been serving with us on an interim basis for a couple of weeks, a couple of rough weeks. We had a little student protest we had to deal with. So trial by fire is the best test, and she is spectacular. So I'm pleased to present her to this committee and for your consideration.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
Second. First, Ron. I'm so used to saying.
Unmoved. May I have a second?
Right.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries. Welcome to CUNY.
Thank you.
And would you like to address the committee?
Hello, committee. It's nice to see you all. Thank you so much for that approval. I'll now go and sign a lease for an apartment and move my family here. It's a pleasure to be here, it's a pleasure to be back in New York, and I'm thrilled to be at John Jay. I remember John Jay when I was a teenager, getting ready to go to college, as a place that stood out, and coming back many years later, it's still a place that stands out. Thank you to President Travis for welcoming me, and to all of the John Jay family. I feel very much at home here. I'm looking forward to working with colleagues and students and all of you to enhance the student experience, graduate more students, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Thank you, Jeremy. And we will now move to the information items. That they aren't.
Well, a number of reappointments with early tenure, but they are for information, and they were, they do not require a report or a vote.
Okay. And the Vice Chancellor has not?
The Vice Chancellor is still trying to figure out where all the boxes are, so.
Well, congratulations on the move, there being no additional items. There being no additional items. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second? Have a good April, and we'll see you in May.
June.
June. All right. Enjoy, finally.